Okay, welcome to the special session of the Listen to This Bull Show. This is the show we talk about bullshit in the insurance world. There's lots of it on both sides. We like to expose it. Not in a weird way, though. We expose only things appropriately, in an appropriate way, in an appropriate fashion. This is a special session because the person that I have that's coming on the show is a legend. And the fact that she's on my show kind of gives me a little bit of chills. I mean, I'm tweaking out just a little bit and not because of some weird shit that I've taken. My eye is twitching. I'm a little bit nervous. Amy Bach, if you know who Amy Bach is, you'll know why this is happening. But it's a special session because she didn't realize that we were supposed to be on last night, and I didn't have the heart to tell her. And she's just now hearing this for the first time, sitting in the wing. So I'm sure that she feels a little bit sheepish. I'm going to play this little video intro real quick, and then we'll bring her on. That disclaimer said, "I'm not an attorney," but luckily, Amy Bach is. Hi, Amy.
Matt, it's so great to be with you at long last. We've been trying to get this together, and I'm so glad that it came together today.
It is working out. So I've got a lot of people that got really excited that you were going to be on here. For any of you that don't know, Amy is an attorney in California. Are you in other states as well?
Well, the United Policy Holders is a national organization, but my only law license is in the state of California.
Hi, Sarah. So this is a live show. The goal here is to make a conversational tone. We want our audience to ask a bunch of questions. Obviously, I'm going to ask you a ton of questions about United Policy Holders, but I would prefer if the audience had questions to ask you. There's a lot of things that we don't really discuss about California. I'd love to get into this show. There's a lot of PAs that are out there that don't get a lot of attention because it's not Florida and it's not Texas, and so it's not sexy. And we want to make California sexy again.
Thanks for having me on in that case.
Right. That's why Amy Bach's on. Talk to me about California a little bit, though. What are the biggest concerns for California policyholders?
Well, one of the biggest concerns right now is that the PNC market for both residential and commercial are in the proverbial crapper. So in the rural and suburban areas, meaning you know the problems that Floridians have had, where, you know, a lot of the name brand insurers kind of decided that the home insurance market in California, Florida was not for them after Andrew had started. And, you know, there's just been this sort of roller coaster back and forth. And what we are having in California is that we had, again, the parallel to Florida. We, just like you had, you know, this storm, boom, 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 boom. If you get bad luck, you get a bunch of storms in a row, hurricanes in a row. The insurers take big hits and then they want to retract, right? So we had in California, 2016, we had a tree mortality crisis, you know, climate change driven drought. Trees couldn't withstand the bark beetle because they're so busy trying to stay alive with no water. So we had 110 million trees die off along the Sierras, and insurers noticed it, and they started dropping a lot of their customers in the foothills. And then a lot of their elected officials started to, you know, come to UP, ask us for help, and we got involved in a lot of public policy stuff around that. But the problem has continued to grow because then we had, 2017, we had the fires in the wine country, which took out, you know, some 7,000 structures, and a lot of them were very high value.
And the wine.
And the wine, which is, yes.
It's terrible.
Crushing. Anyway, then we had, 2018, the very next year, we had the Woolsey Fire, which took out mega mansions in Malibu, as well as then 18,000 structures in Paradise, which everybody knows about. Plus, there was also a wildfire in Ventura. So it was just, we had really bad luck, and the reinsurers were like, whoa, we're going to, you know, increase our prices. And then the primary insurers were like, whoa, we're going to dramatically reduce our market share. So if you live, we have a very similar situation in Florida. If you live in an area that's either a woo-ee, which is wildland urban interface, or suburban or rural area, your chances are you've been dropped by the insurer that you always had, and you're either in the fair plan, or you're with, even more scary, a surplus lines company. So very similar markets, really. We're getting, and not just for homeowners. And of course, that's scary because you know that holding a surplus lines insurer accountable for bad claim handling is scary. Their forms don't get.
Do they have regulations for surplus lines in California at all?
I mean, technically, they're supposed to, and this goes around the country, you know. They're supposed, surplus lines insurers are supposed to comply with all the regulations and laws in the state, but they, but they don't have, they're not accountable to the regulator in the same way, right? Their forms don't get scrutinized. But lawyers, like, you know, Jeff Raisner down in Texas assures me that he's hit plenty of surplus lines carriers, and most of, you know, my bad faith friends, they'll take on, you know, they'll prosecute a case against the surplus lines company, but it can be really, really challenging because a lot of them are like offshore, and they're like, you know, private equity money, and it's very, you got to really, it's not like, you know, you sue State Farm and you know where they live.
Well, yeah, and there's one company that you're suing with surplus lines, or might be multiple anyway. Would that be several lawsuits, or can they tie them into one?
It's just, the bottom line is that they're slippery. That's the bottom line. Plus, they're not covered by the Guarantee Associations, right? So like, if one of them goes belly up, there's no there there for the policyholder. So the market in California.
I mean, the policyholders barely have anything in those programs anyway.
Right, right. So, exactly. No, I mean, listen, we're working on, we've been interviewing some people that, there was one insurer that went belly up after the campfire in Paradise. Merced Property Casualty Team, they had like, I want to say, like, maybe 100, maybe, total losses, and they went under. They couldn't handle it. And, you know, talking to people who went through the claim process with the Guarantee Association, you know, it's just another cluster.
Yeah. It can be its own little nightmare. Clint asks if it's time for a federal insurance minimum.
I would say yes, but that, you know, that's a short answer to a very long question. There are a bunch of things happening all at once, right? Because, and this week, the Federal Insurance Office, which is this tiny little office that Congress created after the 2008 meltdown, right? They said, well, yeah, sure, the states regulate insurance, but they were not completely on top of the, you know, the credit default swap, you know, the whole, all those products that caused AIG to have to come, you know, to the government and get a huge bailout. So there was a recognition after 2008 that, yeah, sure, state regulation is all well and good, but some federal oversight of the insurance industry is imperative. So they created this Federal Insurance Office, but they hardly gave them any resources. But they did announce yesterday that they will be doing a data call, this little federal office. It's, for us nerds, it's like a big deal because, you know, states are always like, stay out of it. It's our regulatory turf. But obviously, with what's going on right now with Ian and the NFIP and everything else, clearly, there's a federal interest in overseeing the insurance industry a little bit more than has been happening. And, you know, should we, so the Federal Insurance Office is going to do this data call. They're going to look at actual claim data, which is really important in.
Where are they getting the data from?
Sorry?
Where are they getting that data from, though?
Well, the insurers. So of course, you know, the APCIA, which is the American Property Casualty Insurance, that's, you know, they're the main trade association for the insurance industry in DC, and they have state offices. There used to be two. There was the American Insurance Association, and then there was PCI, the Property Casualty Insurers, just for property casualty, right? There's a million other trade associations for life and health, but this is just for where we focus, right? PNC. So the two trade associations merged. They became APCIA. APCIA put out a statement today saying, you know, "We want to make sure that this isn't an intrusive waste of time." It's like, you know, hello, the entire, you know. I mean, you can see that there's a lot of mortgaged collateral that needs to be insured, and it's not being properly insured anymore. And the federal government needs to pay attention to that.
You know, that is very intriguing. Obviously, it's exciting because something good could come from it, but whenever you're getting your data from a single source, one party of the two-party system, basically, it feels like it could be easily skewed to one party favor.
Right, right, right. Well, you know how good the insurers are at spinning. I mean, you know, if I've heard once, you know, oh, the campfire wiped out 30 years of an underwriting income, and, you know, one day, I've heard that so many times. It's like, you know that can't be true.
No, no. You know, and a lot of the data that they give out, like in Florida right now, they're talking about how in this one state, we have more than 70% of all litigation cases for all insurance claims. What they don't end up saying is what percentage of those claims were won by the insurance company for those cases?
But you never hear the end of the story, right?
No.
Right.
So, you know, it's kind of rough that way. But it's still something in the right direction. Are they going to open up? Do you know if this is more of like a town hall meeting where someone can speak out?
Which?
This meeting that the Federal Office of Insurance.
No, well, they, okay, so, I mean, there's this, it's, they have, so FIO, the Federal Insurance Office, they have a charge from Congress to examine how climate change is impacting the property casualty sector. And they're kind of, you know, they've had lots of, they've gotten, they've solicited comments. They've gotten, you know, last fall, they got like 7,000 comments. They are supposed to advise the Treasury, right? So they're under the Treasury. So the Federal Advisor, so the FIO is under the Treasury. FIO has an advisory committee. I'm on it, along with a few other people, like, that you might, there's some other consumer advocates, and then there's a lot of insurance industry bigwigs on there. And then there's some elected officials on there. And we meet four times a year, and those are open to the public. But, you know, no one, there's not, no one pays attention but me and a few other people. And, you know, it is a long way from Tallahassee, right? It's like, there's a lot going on, as you know, in Florida, a lot. And, but it's not federal, right? I mean, I think, I get, you know, you kind of get the feeling that, like, the NFIP, you know, the National Fund Insurance Program is like, kind of, you know, a little bit removed, probably worrying about the politics in Florida. I think everybody that follows you. What's that?
You think the NFIP cares about Florida politics?
Well, they, they, look, they, maybe they do. I mean, let's see, let's remember. Do you remember Katrina, 2005? The famous line, "You're doing a heck of a job, Brownie," if you remember this. So Michael Brown, who was the FEMA guy at the time, you know, was on television saying, oh, you know, you're doing a heck of a, oh, no, it was Bush, that's right, said, "You're doing a heck of a job, Brownie." Meanwhile, you know, bodies were floating in the bayou, and it was a mess. And he got really, that line stuck for a long time on the president, you know, that like, like, it seemed like a what me worry kind of.
There was a lot of statements that stuck for him, though. Yeah. That one kind of got lost in the mix of all of them.
But, you know, look, I mean.
It was strategy, though. I think he did it on purpose.
Well, you know what's going to go down because in the end is already, you know, it's the same, similar to what happened with Katrina, and a little bit Sandy, right? Here you got this program that's in debt, right? Like 20 some billion dollars in debt, the NFIP. But like, how many people have fund insurance in Ian? There's like estimates of like, not a lot.
It's ridiculous.
Not a lot, right? So the wind versus water battle is on, right? It's on, right?
Yeah.
And the private insurers are going to be like, oh, it's flood, it's flood. And, you know, the NFIP is going to be, well, you know, the first thing they did, which was very unusual, I don't, I've never seen them do this before, was say that they were going to do $20,000 advances to their calls.
That was the first time they've done that? I didn't realize that.
I've never seen them do it before. I mean.
I hadn't paid attention. That's interesting.
Yeah. So, and then, you know, after Sandy, politics mattered to them because they, they had to set up a mediation program, you know, for Sandy. And I've already asked them, are you going to set up a mediation program for claim disputes for Ian? And they already said, well, we don't have any plans to do that now. And, you know, I don't know, I guess my feeling, I'm less, I mean, I know the, I'm less worried about the flood claims than I am the home claims. I'm sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, you got the private insurers. They're going to, they're going to do what they're going to do. And a lot of these policies that are written right now for Florida, they've tied up a lot of the, I'll call it loopholes, for lack of a better term. They've tied up a lot of those kind of side doors to get coverages, to call something wind, or having been related to wind to start off with. A lot of the flood exclusion has anti-concurrent causation language tied to it. So regardless of where it came from or what. So it's going to be tougher either way for public adjusters that are working those claims, or anybody that's working those claims. But I wouldn't worry about it because the Florida Insurance Commissioner, the Florida Financial.
CFO, yes.
The CFO, yes. Florida, bloody hell. Why don't they just call them a DOI like a normal state? I'm new to Florida. It's still taken me a while to get the right terminology down. But, you know, he's going to handle any problems that you have. You don't need a public adjuster. Those are locusts. You just have to call their office, and they'll get these things resolved. It'll be fine.
You know, it just killed me to hear him say that. I was like, of all the, of all the threshold messages, you should be saying, call, I'd say, hey, insurers, we are, we are counting on you to do the right thing and pay these claims quickly, thoroughly, fairly, investigate them, do everything you can to get these people their benefits. That should have been his message, not look out for these people that are going to try to cheat you. You're like, okay, you can, you can warn people about scams and frauds, but you don't have to discourage people from getting professional help on their insurance claims, which of course, a lot of people need.
Yeah. You know, there's a big problem for people that are in these major events, be it wildfire, or hurricane, or floods, you know. They're stuck in a position, they have no idea what to do, they don't know who to turn to. So anybody talking to them and offering help could easily take advantage of that situation. But so can the people that are paid to give them help in advance, the insurance carriers. They could easily take advantage of that kind of a situation as well. And you need someone that's of the right state of mind. That individual, that policyholder at that moment, is not in the right state of mind.
No, no. And I think, you know, it's a little, I mean, I see the difference in some of the states that we work in where the regulator, if the regulator is, takes seriously their consumer protection charge, they can do a lot. I mean, and that's, and you can look at Colorado. You know, Commissioner Conway in Colorado, they had the Marshall Fire last year. And, you know, listen, wildfire losses are a lot cleaner than hurricane losses, right? You don't, you know, there's no question about the causation. You don't have two policies. It's much simpler, right? Yeah. But he, he's, he's put out directive after directive. He did data gathering, and he, and keeps on his messages to the insurers, put your best foot forward, do the right thing. And, and that's what, of course, what you want to hear from a public official, you know.
And Louisiana, similar. They're constantly putting out a lot of things that seem to be very policyholder centric. They're trying to help out the consumer.
They're trying. And they know because of what's going on in the industry is, it's heartbreaking. You know, I mean, how many, how many old, you know, IAs, you know, have I now encountered that say, I couldn't, you know, it used to be an honorable situation, but now, you know, and when I, you know, when I get a chance to talk to, you know, the insurance executives, I try to say to them, you know, I understand that you're enamored with, you know, McKinsey and Bain and all these efficiency consultants telling you that you can save money with mobile claim adjusting and Exactimit, and you can, you know, and all that. But it's like, it doesn't work. You know, you got to adjust losses the old fashioned way. You know, it's not, it's not, it doesn't work to try to cookie cutter it, right? And every time you do, you end up getting sued, right?
But that's our fault.
How's that, how's that, what do you mean?
No. You have to remember who you're talking to.
Right.
So.
The guy with the chocolate hat.
The guy with the hat that talks to him in a very sexual fashion. It's really kind of odd.
She, her voice is quite sultry.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true. That's why I don't throw her away, I guess. Somebody, so Sarah's been posting so many links, and it doesn't work. I just click the screen. So this isn't working, me just posting these links up here. But she brings up the United Policy Holders, and I haven't said anything about that yet. So I want to mention to the audience, if you don't know who Amy Bach is, this is the founder of the United Policy Holders, uphelp.org. I'll throw a banner up with that real quick. Pow. Uphelp.org, one of the best foundations that exist for policyholders. There's a ton of useful stuff on there. Contractors ask me often if there is a model proof of loss form that they can just let the policyholder fill it out for themselves. That's where I send them. Well, there, that's where I send them. It's fantastic. It's all there. I don't have to recreate it. I've always thought that I was going to have to make a lot of these things myself because they didn't exist. And then Sarah Parker showed me the way.
Well, Sarah Parker is a treasure and a pleasure to know and work with, and has made a lot of contributions to our library, as have probably some of your followers. I mean, a lot of, you know, we've been building that library. We had a website very early on, and, you know, the internet, we're here based in the Bay Area. So, you know, we were able to find somebody, built us a website. We've been building these libraries out. You know, we had a really, really robust library for Katrina. And, and then we, you know, now we have these really robust libraries for every one of the disasters we get involved in. And a lot of our content has come from public adjusters and policyholder lawyers, you know, and consumers, people who, you know, want to share lessons the hard way. But, you know, we've always, from the time we, you know, when we were first founded, we've been close to the professionals that you can hire if you're not getting treated fairly by an insurance company. And, you know, even though I now travel in a lot of, you know, sort of policymaker type circles where I have to be very, I just have to be diplomatic as possible, right? Our website is, is supposed to arm people, you know, to help them get what they paid for. That's the idea.
So that makes you biased. So when you're dealing with some of those carriers, they look at you like the enemy at times, I assume. Yeah, I have the same issue doing this channel, even though I point out bullshit on our side plenty of times. And even United Policy Holders will help you make sure you're not dealing with an unscrupulous public adjuster or contractor. It's not 100% biased, but we are looking out for the consumer as a whole. And we're looking out for them against the primary concerns that they have. So, but it's hard dealing with those people because they want you to be unbiased. They want you to be as fair as possible, but it's hard.
Well, it's hard when you, it's hard when you get out there in the real world, and, you know, and you have, you know, you have elderly women saying that, you know, and you see how their claim got handled, and you're like, clearly, the adjuster was, you know, was not, was taking advantage of her vulnerability, and you just hate to see that. And, you know, you know it happens. But, you know, our tagline is empower, we're dedicated to empowering the insured. And, and so, you know, our whole approach is to, is to try to identify trustworthy information and free resources, and resources that you can pay for that are reliable. But it's hard, you know, it's definitely a jungle out there. You know that. Yeah, I mean, we just had, we were just on our team meeting this week, and, you know, somebody's like, has anyone ever heard of, you know, disaster recovery advocates? You know, no, okay, we go on there. It's a public adjusting firm. Well, I have a lot of respect for the public adjusting profession, but when public adjusters try to masquerade as consumer advocates, it does frustrate me because I'm like, well, I mean, just be honest about what you do. You're a claim professional. I mean, maybe in your heart, you're a consumer advocate, but you're a for-profit business. So let, you know, make sure that the consumer understands the difference, right? Because, because otherwise, you get in a situation like, you know, what we've got going in Florida where there's like a war on policyholder advocates, which is just wrong, you know, and bad. And I think it's partly because there's, you know, maybe been a little too much entrepreneurial activity down there, you know? It's just been.
That is the best term ever. Florida needs to chill out on their entrepreneurial activities. Now, when I first moved to Florida, I kept hearing about the South Florida public adjusters, and the South Florida public adjusters to tell me about the evil North and Central Florida public adjusters. There's always this vague group that are definitely the problem, and we are not the problem. It's never us. It's always this other group. We're all full of shit. That's what it comes down to.
Yes, well, my eyes are green, I can just say, you know, but seriously. I mean, come on, you know, it's, it's, there's nothing wrong with making a living as a policyholder advocate. It's important. I mean, my God, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's not like my nonprofit is going to, you know, go to the mat and take somebody through appraisal and, you know, and, and, you know, on behalf of an individual, we can't do that. We don't do that. So, but we, we need there to be strong advocates out there, you know, that we can send people to, which is why we have a sponsor program and why we have volunteers. So, you know, we have, we have amazing volunteers, you know? Sarah's one of them. David Princeton is one of them, you know? Thanks to David, you know, we've got now in almost every state, we've got a little recap of what are the regs and the laws in that state that you can use. Kayden Tinkelmanberg, you know, when the derecho hit Iowa, and we were like, what's that? What's a derecho? You know, I got connected with him, possibly through you, something on social media. And it might have been on, it might have been on, is it Steve Patrick's?
Level of playing field?
Level of playing field, yeah, yeah. And Kayden, you know, did a great piece for us and became, you know, one of our eyes and ears in the Midwest. And we have eyes and ears all over the place. And we have a lot in Florida, which is why we're dipping our toes in the Ian recovery water, you know, as overwhelming as it feels.
Yeah. I know, we've done a lot of, well, we try to do as much as we could with handing out water, food, hand sanitizer, different kinds of things after the event. I know there's a lot of PAs that are down there doing a lot more. One of the people that really impressed the hell out of me was a roofer, or he's, represents an app called iRoofing. His name is Joshua, I could never remember his last name. Is Joshua iRoofing online? And that's good enough. That dude is just unsung hero. There's a lot of big unsung heroes that aren't really broadcasting all the things they're doing, and it's fantastic. And they're not looking for work out of it, but I know that that is a good way to, you know, gain some exposure in an area when you can't solicit. But that's not necessarily a bad thing. You're still helping, you know? Public adjusters, we all have this hero complex. We're all, we're all fighting against injustice. Injustice pisses us off. Sometimes it pisses us off so much that we can become dicks to the opposition. And you don't necessarily need to do that. There's actually better ways to go about it, which we try to teach you. But I love United Policy Holders. I keep thinking I need to join up, and then I don't because I don't know how.
Oh, that's, thank you for raising that. Funny you should mention that. Well, so, you know, there's a lot of ways that you can. Funny you should mention that. Well, so, you know, there's a lot of ways that you can, um, become involved, but, you know, if you are a professional that is marketing your services to policy holders, you definitely want to think about becoming a sponsor, which means you make a donation at one of three levels and you get listed in our find help directory in whatever states you're licensed in and we work that out with you and it's incredibly important, but we have a tiny directory in Florida, which is breaking my heart. There you go. And if you go, if you go to recovery help, see the purple hover over the, well, there, yeah, you can give money. That's the great.
This one here?
Where five, there you go. See the professional find help directory. If you go down to that, there you go. So more and more consumers are using this directory. We're getting like half a million unique visitors a year and a lot of them are using this directory to find, um, the names of, but see, we only have, we hardly have anything. That's Louisiana. We don't have a lot. We're not, we're not that great at marketing. Okay. As Sarah Parker would be the first person to tell you. We're great at getting shit done. I'll be honest. We get a lot done every day. We, we are, you know, I have, I have an amazing team and we have amazing family, right? You know, Chip Merlin's been family for, for decades, you know, Reed Smith. Are just a powerhouse for us. Tutweiler, you know, Dick and, and now Rick in Florida. You know, just wonderful people that, and some point guys that are, you know, that were, a lot of them were with Greenspan out on the, on the, on the West Coast. But I, you know, we need more Florida people, um, in our directory. We need, but we need, you know, we need good people. We need the ethical people. You know, because we don't want to get consumers coming back and saying to us, oh, I hired so and so through you and, you know, and then this and that and the other thing. So, um, we do our best to have quality people, uh, in our, we have lots of people in California because of course that's where we're based. So yeah, so you can donate, you can become a sponsor. You can, and if you become a sponsor, the base level is a thousand bucks a year. It's tax deductible. You can pay it in monthly installments. Um, so it's not that bad, you know, if you want to be platinum and fancy, it's 5K. If you want to be gold and kind of fancy, it's 2,500. So it's not, it's not too bad. And again, you can do it monthly, which is great, but also volunteers. I mean, I mean, we try to, to, you know, you scratch our back, we'll scratch yours, right? So, you know, Kayden wrote, um, us that nice piece or David does his thing and, you know, we'll try to, to, you know, get, we'll, we'll put his name. We, you know, Rick Tutweiler sent us some photos that we are using for Ian. We, we put his name, you know, so we will trade free publicity, you know, for substantive donations to, to, to our library, for example. So like, I mean, I, I don't know. I can't, I can't thank Sarah enough because she's constantly giving us suggestions and great ideas. Holly Soffer up in Pennsylvania, another one that just, you know, gives, keeps us, keeps us informed.
There's so many things, especially on, and, and I've sent so many policyholders to this that I, there was no way that I could help them out, but they didn't really need my help. They just needed a thing, a small thing. I've sent them to them to this claim guidance library so many times for simple things. But there's stuff in here I didn't even know exists that first steps after a flood. This is fantastic for some of the people in Florida that just don't know what they're supposed to do next.
What am I supposed to do?
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah. And because we don't sell anything and you can't hire us or buy us, you know, we do have a lot of credibility with decision makers. So, you know, yeah, I'm trying really hard to influence the Florida Office of Insurance Regulation, you know, I'm trying to help them do, you know, be, you know, I, I want them to, you know, participate in our roadmap to recovery webinars. We have three programs. Sarah, I think, put that up there. One of which is the roadmap to preparedness. That's, that's sort of the most sort of vanilla thing that we do, you know, helping people understand that not all insurance policies are the same. And if you're gonna insure your assets, especially today, you can't just blindly trust that the insurance agent has you covered, right? You gotta pay attention.
Yeah.
Roadmatch recovery is the meat and potatoes. Like that's where we're really helping the consumer and that's where we go in. And like, if you go to our Ian help library, if you go, um, back up to the, back up to the, um, let's see, if you go, where's the, yeah, no, you're in the right place. The libraries, the disaster help libraries that, no, disaster recovery help, go up one, there you go. There. So there is, there's our Ian library. We welcome donations of content from volunteers. You give us something we can use, a sample of a, of an engineering report or, um, you know, a, a letter from an insurance company where they say something not true, you know, if you want to give us examples of things, you know, as long, you know, we will credit you as, as a contributor. So we have divided it up into steps. Of course, this is consumer facing, right? So it's not, um, we try not to get too technical, although some of it is fairly technical. But, um, the idea here is to get, open people's eyes and empower them. And if they, and a lot of the time, people come back and say, I can't do this on my own, you know, who can help me? You know, we will, we'll always say, well, you know, you're, first you should always file a complaint with your state regulator because they, otherwise they don't know what's going on out there. Then we say, you know, keep your expectations low for what they're actually going to do when you file a complaint. But we try, you know, to, uh, so do that. And then we say, gosh, you know, there are professionals that you can hire, um, if, if, you know, if your, if your self-help fails. And I've had PAs, you know, over the years say, come on, Amy, you know, you know, you know that, everybody needs a PA on every claim. And I'm like, look at, come on. You, you know, it doesn't pencil out on a lot of claims to pay somebody a cut of your benefits because, you know, A, two thirds of the people are underinsured in the first place. B, a flood claim, where's the fat, right? It's, you can't, you know that. That's why a lot of PAs are now offering to, um, sorry about that. The light in here is funky. A lot of PAs I, I am hearing are offering to give some free guidance on flood claims because they can't take them. They can't take them on a contingent fee basis, but they feel bad because they know people need help with their scope and their estimates. And, and it's, and it's, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, I mean, the, the, you know, the people that, um, that are, uh, that are offering this free guidance, um, on flood losses, you know, God bless them. I just hope that they give people actionable insights, as it were.
People need to, and there's actually an actual bull insights website. I don't know if you were trying to allude to that.
No, I didn't know that.
That, that's an actual name of a, of a, of actually a useful insight. They give actionable insights. How about that? There's not enough PAs in the world. If everybody needed a public adjuster to gain the benefits of their policy, then this would be a seriously broken system. Not that it isn't, but there's just not enough of us to handle all that anyway. Sarah says something here. I gotta know if this is, if this is because of your. For the people that are listening to this on a podcast, Sarah says, I told Amy about something in my state one week. The next my insurance commissioner serendipitously issued a helpful bulletin. Did you do something?
I try. I am a, I am a gap play, right? I am a connector. You know, you give me information and I will try to get it into the hands of, of the people who need to hear it, you know, and I think I've spent, I've been going to the NAIC meetings three times a year now since 2009. So that's where all the state regulators get together. I've tried very hard, um, to earn, earn their confidence. And, and to be polite, um, which isn't always easy, you know, but you, you know, I listen, the commissioner of Oklahoma, and so, you know, yes, they, it's possible that, um, you know, the Minnesota, the Minnesota department, the, some, they, they want to do the right thing. Um, sometimes they, they need, you know, they need information. I mean, the reality is that for, you know, most of the insurance regulators and, you know, the legislators, I mean, all they hear from all day long, you know, is APCIA and, you know, the American Council of Law, I mean, life insurance lobbyists and the, you know, State Farm's lobbyists and that's, they only hear one side of the story. And the entire reason that I became an insurance consumer advocate, starting in the eighties, was when I saw that the insurance industry was writing their own ticket in the New York state legislature, like they, it's similar to, in some ways to Florida, you know, although in Florida you do have counterforces. But generally speaking, you know, when the insurance industry wants something, um, in a lot of states that they get it, right? And, and that's what you can see. You know, you can see in Florida that, uh, some of these things are, are playing out. I mean, yeah, I remember, I think it was like eight years ago, um, John Doak, he was the insurance commissioner in Oklahoma. And Okey Doke, this is his nickname. Nice guy, even though he mixes church and state in his, used to put in his biblical quotes in his state emails, which I didn't appreciate, but nice guy. And he would say to me, he'd say to me, oh, um, Amy, you know, we can't, insurance companies can't give people a new roof every year. Come on. You know, and I was like, I don't, first of all, I don't think people are asking for a new roof every year. That's number one.
Yeah.
Number two, do you want a house that has a patchwork looking roof? I don't think so. You know, does a roof, does a house that has a patchwork looking roof has the same, have the same real estate value as one with a uniform? You know, it doesn't. Come on. So look, it's not the person's fault that they're, that they got hit a couple of times, right? So, okay, there are things we could do, like if we need, if we need there to be, and I'm not in the roofing world as far as like, you know, the shingle manufacturers and all that. There's, I know there's a lot going on there, but like, come on, you know, uh, there's got to be a middle ground between leaving people with a less valuable asset if they paid for insurance and giving them something better, right? You, you know, we're not, we're not here.
You know, it is, it's a good point that, you know, it's not their fault. And if they're in a situation where the policy actually would pay for it, you know, the insurance company had the opportunity to write that policy the way that they anticipated actually paying out on those policies. So, Sarah brings up a good point here. She keeps doing that in this episode. I feel like I'm always reading out Sarah's commentary because it's usually pretty, pretty good.
Pretty sharp.
She's a smart girl or something. I should stop giving her sideways compliments. People have to remember that many insurance departments are overwhelmed by health insurance regulation and issues. A property might take a backseat. I noticed this myself. When we were dealing with House Bill 254 in Georgia, I was the president of GAPIA at the time. And we were trying after that, after we negotiated that bill, got the language to be less anti-PA. Which reminds me, I want to go back to a previous comment about anti-PA endorsements in, uh, surplus lines. I want to get back to that before we get off, but one of the things that the insurance department, um, the attorney to the insurance commissioner was telling us that they just, constituents just don't care about property losses. And the only time I can see that real change can happen legislatively is if the people really care. So maybe there has to be a catastrophe for people to really understand that property insurance is a little bit broken. They need to care a little bit more. And then you can have the backing of the people to push some things that are more consumer protection avenue. It's almost like the old adage that, that politicians like to use, never let a good, um, crisis go to waste.
Well, we don't, uh, at United Policyholders. So like every reform, the claim handling reform that we've gotten done in California, we've, we got it done because there was a big disaster and people got fired up and they were upset. How, why does it take so long? And why does the insurance company get to nickel and dimus? And why is it so adversarial? And, you know, so California really did a lot and we've done the same thing in Cali- Colorado. And we did the same thing in, in, uh, the state of Oregon. We got, we helped get, we're, we're, we're doing these reforms because, um, you're right. I mean, people, until it happens to you, you don't care. You know, you care about your auto insurance. You care about your health insurance, but your property interests us people, you, you know, and then, and then, then of course, you know, when it's too late, then you're like, wait a second.
There's something I noticed that's really interesting in many states. Uh, it's definitely not in every state this way, but in many, many states, the Department of Insurance or their equivalent has written regulations based on the statutes that were, uh, voted on. And those regulations have to do with what insurance policies are allowed to have inside of them. And so when they have an insurance, the policy that's sent to them to be approved, they'll approve or not approve it or ignore it and it gets passed anyway. But once it's approved or allowed to be sold in that state, what's interesting is in many states, they have the ability to find out later that the policy doesn't really meet the requirements of the statutes. For health and auto, they're allowed to remove those bad policies, but they're not allowed to do that for property. They've literally written that out of their own regulations and rules. They've taken our power away from themselves. I find that very interesting.
Yeah. I mean, listen, I'll tell you, we had an example out here in California that was, that was really kind of depressing, you know, that the Department of Insurance, which of course has the, they, not just the authority, the obligation, you know, to make sure that a policy form matches the rate being charged, right? So like they're charging the right price for the risk that they are assuming, right? And, and then the, the, our, uh, and our state run and our version of citizens affair plan rolled out this policy that said, we only pay for smoke damage if you can see it unaided with the human eye or smell it unaided with the human nose. And we're like WTF, right? What, listen to this bull. Like what? You know, come on. And the department was like, oh, well, we didn't approve it. And so it's de facto disapproved because it doesn't, it's not in sync with the statute. And I'm like, well, they didn't approve it? Are you going to tell people? Because the consumers are out there getting their claims denied. And unless somehow it filters down to them, that that's not an enforceable policy provision, they're just going to be like, okay.
So in that state though, in your example, if they didn't approve it, they just allowed it to be sold in that state because they didn't physically approve it or didn't stamp it as, as a yes, then it could not actually be utilized?
Even though it's sold, it's not enforceable, right? But somebody has to say that, right? Either the policyholder or somebody working for them has to say, that's bunk. You know, that's illegal and that's not enforceable. But again, that's why we exist, you know, UP exists because, because, because the average consumer, I mean, they just don't know. They don't know the rights. They don't know where to go. They don't know that they're not, that that, that it, just because the insurance company says it doesn't mean it's gospel.
I mean, if the policyholder signs off on that policy, they purchase it, which, all right, here, here's a whole issue, a whole nother topic that would be a whole nother episode, but in reality, when you purchase a policy, you don't get the policy in advance to read it, to know what's in it before you purchase it. You purchase it and then you get a copy of it. So when, when an insurance company says, well, this is the policy you purchased, you signed off on this. They signed off on probably a deck page is worth of information for certain coverage limits and everything. And we're, we're to assume that it's roughly the same coverage as, as an HO form, an ISO form, I should say. But all of these are so widely different. So if it has language like that, that clearly, you know, goes off in a completely different direction than your typical ISO form. And you're not given that information before you purchase it, then is that why it's not enforceable? This is news to me. Which means this news to most of my audience. If they don't approve it, if they just allow it to be sold because they didn't get to it in time. That provision in the policy is not enforceable? How would we know?
Well, you'd have, yeah. I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to know a good policy older lawyer. You'd have to know, um, I mean, and that's like a needle in a haystack even concept, right? You wouldn't know. I mean, that's, let's be real, you wouldn't.
How does a public adjuster know?
Well, you know, it would be, I mean, and like the question of, you know, how often should a pub, public adjuster consult with a lawyer or turn their files over to a lawyer, you know, that's a whole nother. Another topic, um, you know, plus, I mean, these days, of course, you have a lot more contractors getting involved and wanting to, you know, help, help their, you know, help out or, you know, get involved in, um, in the negotiations in a claim and, and even them like, you know, like here's me, I, I'm a lawyer. I've been doing this stuff for 40 years and, and, you know, and when the department got, the only reason that I got that information from our, the California department that they, that this is the position they would have taken is like, there is one of our lawyers in our family, Dylan Schaefer, very, 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 he's a dedicated policy older advocate, um, suing. in, uh, he's a dedicated policyholder advocate, um, suing, uh, you know, insurance companies and, and the fair plan here for mishandling, um, smoke claims. He's the one who, he, he sent it to me and he's like, can you look, look at this bull, you know? And I brought it to the department. That's part of my job, right, is to try to like, you know, through the relationships I've built with state regulators is to say, hey, look at what's going on in your market. Let, what, what, what can we, you know, can we, let's see what we could do about this, right? I don't go to the media like some people might and say, oh, Department of Insurance is useless and da, 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 da. I'm not gonna do that. I would never do that, you know? They're hardworking people, but they're overwhelmed. I'm not, that's not an excuse. It's just reality, right? So what did I get back from them? They said, well, well, Amy, that's not enforceable. And I was like, well, could we put something out publicly? That it's not enforceable. Um, but you know, they have a lot on their plates and sometimes they can, they can swing it and sometimes they, I mean, I mean, and it's, 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 the reason that I stay as close as I do, to public adjusters who participate in trade associations and uphold the codes of ethics, is because they're a critical consumer protection resource. I mean, I, you know, the state departments are overwhelmed and I'm not, it's like, I'm not making excuses for them, but they don't have enough resources. I mean, it's what I was saying about the, the federal insurance office. They've got, I don't know, what do they have, like five people? I don't think they have. I mean, and they, even California, which has like, I think they, they're one of the biggest departments in the nation, but they've, they, listen, we just, they don't have enough bodies, right, to, and, and Colorado, they get, you know, like, they get slammed with consumer complaints. They can't, there's not that much, I mean, it's, there's not that much they can do. I mean, the really, really, the really tough medicine that they can give to insurers is revoking their licenses, right? That is the ultimate punishment they can dole out. And you almost never see them using. Kevin McCarthy in Florida years ago, um, you know, the McKinsey documents came out and we saw that, you know, Allstate had paid their consultants to tell them how to, you know, boost their profits. And so they had figured out how to use claims as a profit center, how to play hardball, how to hire your, you know, your forensic experts that were gonna say what you wanted them to say, how to, all those things. They designed the whole playbook that we see, playing out, right? You get, you hire an engineering firm that's gonna do cookie cutter reports saying it was pre-existing damage or was earth moved in or whatever it is. And you know, you, that's the game and, you know, and that all came out. And, and it, and Kevin McCarthy, who was the commissioner in Florida at the time, was like, wait a second. And he actually said to some of the, to, I think it was State Farm, I'm gonna suspend your license to sell auto, which of course is the ultimate. You know, if you don't give me the data that I need on your claims payouts. Because I need to understand, like, are you living up to your obligations or not? That's the only time I've ever seen, um, a state regulator really go hard, like in that way. But, you know, I think the state regulators do what they can. They try. At least some of them do. They really, really do.
Question for you.
Sure.
Do you think that an organization like United Policyholders has more pull with regulators than an organization like NAPIA? Or an organization of public insurance adjusters specifically?
Yes, in some ways, in some ways, in some ways, no. I mean, Anne Froman, who lobbies for NAPIA, she's awesome. She was an insurance commissioner. They respect her. When it comes to the, to the nuts and bolts things, I mean, come on, on like, on, on licensing and on, um, I mean, licensing is the big one. You know, NAPIA is, has, has really made a lot of headway there. And I have helped them at the N A I C, but I gotta tell you, when, when I first got involved at the N A I C, public adjusters were, they were not there really, you know, and there was not a, and, and, and you know that insurance companies, it's in their DNA not to like PAs, even though I'm like, hey, you know, y- your customer has some, you know, you're always complaining you can't hire good adjusters. Wouldn't you like somebody professional to be helping adjust the loss? But whatever, that's Pollyanna. So, I mean, look, the regulators like me personally, a lot of them do, um, because I respect them. I, I try, I try. I try to give them ideas that are, that are practical. I don't excoriate them in the media. I don't throw mud at them. I don't tell them that they, that they're lame like some people do. Um, because I, I, it, I don't, there's no point to that, you know? I, I told Commissioner Donlin, whatever I can do to help you, I will do. And I would say the same thing to Altmeier. As soon as Ian hit, I wrote him, I said, listen, you know, um, appraisal's broken and you're gonna have a lot of valuation disputes. You're gonna have a ton, of valuation disputes over the scope and cost of hurricane, you know, damage repairs. Appraisal is, it's just a, it's a thicket. It's a mess.
Yeah, the, the, the idea of what scope is, is really a big problem. And, and it's being challenged everywhere. And it's being challenged constantly, even after it's been decided what is appraisable. They're still challenging it again and again and again. It's like they want to have it overturned. It's, it's a lot of State Farm doing a lot of that.
Well, you know, um, uh, you, you know, a lot of, a lot of your followers, I'm sure know about, you know, Steve Badger and the back and forth and this and that. United Policyholders has filed probably, I mean, at least seventeen, maybe more, amicus briefs around the country on appraisal, saying that if you're gonna go through the, if you're gonna go through the process of deciding, what happened to this property as a, in this, in the, in the event that gave rise to the claim? And how much is it gonna cost to fix it? Don't worry about whether it's covered or not. Just settle on the price and the scope and the price. Then you can fight out. Right?
Oh, my God. Well, I don't understand why it's so complex.
I don't either. It's like, it's like, we have the litigation system, right? If you want to fight about, you know, coverage, fight there. But appraisal's supposed to be for the, for the construction experts, the people who know how to talk about, a two by four and, you know, and, and, you know, come on.
If, if you think the contractor's gouging you, that's what appraisal's for. And, and you can, you can make sure that that happens. But there's, there's so many more disputes that can be handled outside of court. Allow appraisal to handle that kind of thing.
Right, exactly. I mean, you think a judge, that would, that, they're a judge. They don't know from, you know, drywall, you know, pricing, this and that, no. Anyway, I, I, I am hoping, hope springs eternal. Um, you know, we're trying to save, you know, we're trying to help and, you know, um, say insurers save them from themselves in a way, like, they're in, they're enchanted with technology. You know, they're just enchanted. Oh, my gosh, you know, exactment and, 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 you know, and it's like, come on.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not gonna make that much difference. You can't, you can't identify the actual scope of work. If you're putting the stuff in yourself. So, I mean, you, you still have to know how the construction works. So you have to have an actual, and not a preferred vendor, because then you're using the experts that are your friends that, that can give you the right answer the way that you want. It's, it's, the system is broken. I love that United Policyholders exists because I think that you're right. When an organization of public adjusters reaches out and says that all these things are a problem, it seems self fulfilling or a benefit to the public adjuster for it to go our way. United Policyholders is a nonprofit. An actual nonprofit has a lot more leeway with regulators to be able to get a lot more done, because you can show that this is happening. Does it matter that you, as a part of United Policyholders, are also a plaintiff attorney for property losses?
I'm not, I'm not, I haven't practiced since two thousand and five. I,
I know that.
Yeah, no. I, I, full-time job. Yeah, no. I gave that up a long time ago, but I got enough mileage under my belt. I took a couple of clients through appraisal. So I understand how that works. And I tried a couple of, of bad faith cases. So I kind of, you know, I know how that works, but I don't do that stuff. I mean, U P is a full-time job and then some. And I, and I know we have to wrap up. Um, I want to say like, NAPIA is incredibly important and they have made huge headway at the N A I C. They've gotten a lot more, um, respect.
I remember several APUs, don't get me wrong. I, I definitely understand the, the need for the organizations, especially locally, because they understand the laws in that state and how things are working in that state. A lot better than a national organization never really could. And so there can be a hand in hand work.
There is. I mean, there is. I, listen, when you, you know, years ago, I helped broker a meeting between Donlin and NAPIA because, you know, when we, we tried to fix the licensing problem in Louisiana. And, you know, I'm always trying to broker peace, like, right? Because, because I, I actually think the insurance system is good when it works. It's just the profit motives distorted. And, and now we've got technology in the mix, you know, um, and business consultants. And it's, it's really eroded, you know, the, the, the bar, the, you know, the gentleman's agreement part of like, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be there for you. And, and, you know, try to, try to uphold that. And, you know, for the PAs that do a great job at, at, um, you know, estimating losses and reading policies and, 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 you know, getting the claims adjusted. You know, keep up the great work because, um, you know, the insurers keep going off track. You know, they keep trying to outsource and, and work around and there's no workaround, right? This, you gotta, adjusting losses is just, it's just a, it's a, it's work. And you gotta do the work and you can't take a shortcut.
Do your jobs.
Right.
You know, it, it's great, though, that, that it exists, you know, the more and more legislators that have this hard on to attack public adjusters. You know, if, if it's a public adjuster organization that's reaching out to them to say, no, they're, they're, they're already anti-P A. So having something outside of that, that a P A can get involved in, they can actually still make a difference because they're not, you're a nonprofit. I enamored the idea. I've gotten myself involved in a lot of organizations. Um, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to put on the screen exactly how people can get involved in this. Uh, but there's also some fun stuff that you guys do, like this. Or up to good charity event. I said, no good.
Well, thank you. I mean, at, you know, the best advertisement for the public adjusting profession is a public adjuster who, who delivers a good result for their client. And I have been in hearings and, you know, in the legislature in California where a lawmaker is like, my, my mom had, had a claim and I hired a P A and he did a great job. I was like, okay, that's what you need, right? Just do, keep doing a good job. Um, but yeah, we do, we, U P definitely has a fun side. So, um, tomorrow night, we have our, um, drink up, our up to good virtual fundraiser, which, um, it's a little, it's too late to get your wine in time, but I know you're gonna be there and I'm super psyched, Matt. And, and Sarah and Chip Merlin, um, was incredibly generous and, and, and bought a lot of, um, gift tickets. And we, we really appreciate that. And he'll be with us and we'll have, um, the winemakers, um, tomorrow night. And you can, you can still buy a ticket. You won't get your wine in time, but the wine is damn good. And then next September, if you want to make a trip to the wine country, September eighth is gonna be our up to good live party at a winery. And it's really fun. And this year, the super hot Miss California was there. Um, so it was, um, we, we do, we do have a fun side, even though insurance is not exactly considered a sexy topic.
No. If, if you guys don't know Amy Bach, she is a lot of fun. The first time I met her, we played Cards Against Humanity together. She doesn't remember that.
Now I do remember that.
Yeah, you do.
You know, we, we need all the good brain power to fix appraisal. We really need it.
There's a lot of, of issues there. Georgia has been suffering on the appraisal side for a long time. It's something we've been really, really trying to fix. Um, and, and there's no light at the end of the tunnel at the moment.
Right. I know. We just need ideas. And, and I, I've got a, a sponsor event that, coming up where we invited, I just, you know, want to get, um, input from the people who support us of like, okay, what do you guys think? And gals.
That's cool. That's really cool. That could be very helpful. I, I really appreciate you being on the show. Uh, especially, uh, I want to call it late notice, but we, we have been knocking on your door for a while.
Yes, I'm glad that it finally came together. I'm so grateful to Sarah for, uh, and Holly for, um, getting my attention and knocking on, you know, my head to get like, ah. Um, and I really, really appreciate what you do, Matt. Um, and, and what your followers do, um, you know, paying attention to the details. It's, the devil is in those details, is it not?
Yeah, it can be. It definitely can be. Um, sometimes being too deep in the details is the devil itself.
Well, that's, that's the other thing. I love to say this, you know, the principle of indemnity, you know, um, is, you know, the purpose, right? People don't buy insurance to get on some complicated freaking thing, right? They get, they buy insurance so the experts will make things better when Humpty Dumpty falls off the wall. They don't need to get in the weeds. And it's just gotten way complicated.
And it really has, yeah. So if you guys are interested in getting involved, United, United Policyholders, go to uphelp.org. Um, and find the, well, I showed it to you earlier. You'll just have to watch the episode again to figure it out. This was fun. I'd like to have you on again. And I want you to say, yes, you'll do that again on the air so that you, I can hold you to it.
Yes, I'll do that. There we go. There I am.
Oh, nice. That'd actually be cool. Thanks, Amy. I'll see you next time. That was Amy Bach. She's a legend for a reason. I learned something new. I didn't know that if the specific policy language is improved by the state, even if it's being sold because it wasn't denied by the state, then it's possibly not enforceable. And that might be state specific, maybe. But, uh, definitely something worth looking into. I'm gonna do a lot more research on that. I'm super excited about it. See you guys next Tuesday at six P M. Uh, for listening to this bull live, if you want to help support the channel, uh, we do have a Patreon page, patreon.com backslash L two T B. Uh, thanks again. I'll see you guys next Tuesday.